Uh, Madam Clerk, the call, the roll is ready to be called.
Present ma'am.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Pretemperie-Popezku.
Here.
Mayor Rixby.
Here.
All present.
Is there any report on the closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council was in closed session on the item listed on the agenda, which was conference with legal counsel regarding the matter set forth therein. There's no action to report at this time. There's simply a report as to status. The Housing Authority Board was also in closed session on items E, A, and B, which were real property matters. There was a report and direction given to the real property negotiator, and there's no other action to report at this time.
Thank you. We will have the invocation and pledge of allegiance, Councilman Leonard. Please stand.
Father in heaven, we thank you for your watch care and guidance over us, and pray that tonight you will be with us here as we make decisions that affect our citizens of our city, pray that you will guide us into the correct decisions for the welfare of our all concerned. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be deleted or added?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any item not on the agenda? You get three minutes to vent your spleen. No fenestrated spleens. Okay. Item number one is a public hearing establishing a maximum refuse collection disposal rate effective July 1. Public works.
Yes, I have Jeff Peterson will come over and present this item, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item for you is the annual establishment of refuse rates to adjust for the CPI. This is an item that we've been doing for the last several years with the new franchise. An example of the rates as they adjust are on your agenda item. I have the complete rates with me here if you'd like to see any of them. They range approximately 2 percent extra. That would go, take the typical refuse rate for a household just a few cents higher per month. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, I would comment that the rates are still lower than they were several years ago, because we negotiated a 20 percent decrease, and it takes a lot of twos to add up to 20. Is there any other questions by the council?
Can I move the item?
No, I have to do a public hearing.
Thank you, that's why I was asking.
We have a new bumper on our public hearing gavel, so it will not be as loud.
In our, in our agenda packet, we actually have the-
Public hearing is open.
I was gonna say, in our agenda packet, we actually have the rate increases, and we don't have it up here for the public to see it, but basically, we're talking about less than a dollar bi-monthly for residential service, as far as a rate increase. Just informational.
Would the public like to speak on this topic? Well, everybody's either happy, or they've given up. So I'll close the public hearing. And now, you can move the item.
Go ahead and move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. The consent calendar is available. Are there any, any items anybody wants to pull?
I'll move it, and I'll just have one item that I have a question on.
Okay, then, let's deal with your question. Which item?
Um, number 14, awarded contract for the housing element. I am just, I'm noticing that the amount for this contract is going to be used out of two years' budgets, if I'm, if I'm understanding the staff report correct?
Correct.
Does that mean that we did not use any of that amount last year at all for this particular?
Half was budgeted at mid-year to begin this, and then, second half to complete it for the next year.
Do you recall, because I don't, do we not spend money on this in 2011 and 2012?
We did not.
Okay, all right. I'm just hoping that this will be the final amount, so we can finish the general plan. Thank you.
I have a question on item seven. I mean, this, want me to go ahead? It's an impressive record, uh, report regarding streetlight benefit assessment, so forth. I'd just like, and I haven't read the whole thing, uh, I'm wondering the summary version of how this is working out for the city, where we've replaced the streetlights to more energy efficient. It's a different kind of lighting. Is it lighting as well? Do we get complaints? And how much money are we saving?
Yeah, Jeff was the one who helped us with, applied for the grant with Edison, and also worked with Edison to just get the check for $5,000 last week for this rebate. So-
Correct. That was an energy grant program. We installed, well, we replaced 224 streetlights, mostly along the commercial corridor of Barton Road. The lights are more of a true white light. I believe the police officers appreciate not having the yellowness from the high pressure sodium, so I think the true colors that you see on any videos that they may be shooting are helpful and beneficial. We save about 40 percent energy costs with those particular lights. We have about a third of our, of our system, half the city is Edison, half the city is, is run by the city, as far as the streetlights go. So we are catching up. The streetlight assessment district typically has a benefit from the general fund, and that benefit is going down substantially as we are more efficient. It is not zeroed out yet, but we are looking forward to continuing the program of changing out the lights to the LEDs, and, and hopefully, at some point in the future, we will be zeroed out and, and the assessment will cover all.
Any idea how far along we are in that process?
As far as changing them out?
Yeah, total streetlights and how, where we are, 50 percent?
Well, we are, we have changed out about a third of our lights.
Okay.
So we are getting there. But what it is, the ones we changed out first were the commercial ones, they were the higher efficiency ones. The ones that we will be in the future are the residential lights. We don't get quite as big a bang for the buck with those lights, but we will attack those as well.
Why would it be different?
Uh, the different wattages.
Oh, really?
The commercial corridor, we have a 200 and a 250 watt equivalent, and the equivalent in LED is substantially less, it's about 70. Whereas, the 70 watts that we use in the residential, we go down to about a 35. So it's, we don't get quite as, quite as much.
Biggest savings. Okay, well, very good. It's nice to know we're saving some money. Is the life of the light approximately the same?
Uh, no, sir. Actually, actually, the life of the light is substantially longer. The initial cost is substantially more as well. We find that with our research and the study in, basically, the pilot program that we're doing, the payback is less than two years with the energy savings for the difference in cost. We also get, receive a cost because we do not send manpower to change them out more often. So the cost in manpower to maintenance is substantially less.
Thank you.
I'd like to pull 15 for a quick discussion.
We can discuss that now, go ahead.
I see that we are formally entering agreement with the university to, to start up a market night. City manager, maybe discuss that a little bit?
Sure.
We have a working group with a healthy Loma Linda, where we're gonna have a marketing, a market, farmer market every, every Tuesday night, starting at, from 5:00 to 8:00 in the evening.
8:30.
8:30. And will be at the Loma Linda University parking lot, east of Anderson, and just north of the Bank of America. All the, the, the work will be done, on the market will be done on university property. All the setup, cleanup will be done by the university, so we just help agreement to support them.
Are these gonna be the same vendors? And I know about this, I think it's a great idea to kind of bring that university-
There'll be some, some, same vendor that we have on Sunday, and we have extra, too. Yes. And we're still gonna have, continue to have a farmer market over here on Sunday, still.
Good. That's a good idea. I like it.
For, for clarification of why we're, why this is basically being mostly taken on by the university is because what we call the center part of our town is mostly owned by the university. It's all university property, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, a question has come up. First, can we get a second for the?
I'll second that.
Questions come up, does this university contract require drawing straws?
Well, this is kind of an unusual situation, where the city is providing nominal support. There's no monetary arrangement at all between the city and any of the parties who will be conducting the farmer's market. It wasn't really, in fact, necessary that the city be a party to this. So it, it's more of a token vote of approval gesture.
Okay.
No financial impact.
Okay. There's a motion, a second, on the entire consent calendar. Is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. The next item is joint meeting, number 16, City Council and Housing Authority, so I need to call the Housing Authority to order, and the city manager.
Yes, this is another time, a time of year again, we'll present you the next fiscal year budget by our finance director, Dan Indiana.
Oh, we were gonna have a speech from here.
Mayor, council members, this is our annual presentation of the city budget. We did do something different this year. We actually had a workshop with the Budget Committee and Council on May 21st to discuss the budget a little bit more thoroughly, considering the economic times and the situations with the redevelopment agency that are going on. So we took a little bit more time to, to go into a little bit more detail. We've previously met with the Budget Committee members. I see one member here with us. This is just a recap, since we did go through it thoroughly. This is just a recap of some of the items. Again, we no longer have a redevelopment agency, so we now have a housing authority. We chose to be the housing authority for the redevelopment agency. We also are the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, and that's just a, what's called a private purpose trust fund that's presented in the financial statements. It does not have a budget that's adopted. We submit semi-annual ROP statements to the DOF, which they approve the expenditures for the successor agency. The key fund to the city is the general fund. We begin here with the beginning balances, just to highlight where we're at in our starting. We compare for the current year to, to what we are proposing for next year. As you can see, our available balances are increasing. We do still have our rainy day fund, which is committed emergency contingency fund. We have the equipment replacement fund, which is considered an assigned fund. And then, we have our total fund balance, which is for the, we're anticipating to end the year with 9.3, and we're proposing for next year, I mean, to begin the year with 9.3, and then, to end, to begin next year with 9.8. The increase mainly in the beginning fund balance is, will be due to revenue increases. We had some one-time revenue increases throughout the year that are contributing about $400,000 to the general fund balances. This again shows our comparison from one year to the next year for, for our general fund balance. As you can see, the revenue sources, you'll see, you'll note the difference of 13.8 this year, which is those begin, those one-time revenues, and then, 13.5 for next year. We are anticipating a pretty flat revenue source throughout the year. We did not budget very many increases, so, so again, you'll see the one-time in the current year. Expenditures as well, we are very conservative when budgeting our expenditures, and we, so, so we will remain pretty close to our current budgeted expenditures. We are anticipating some operational increases due to personnel, but we are, we are offsetting those with some fire reduction through a negotiated contract with the city of Colton. And here, we highlight the top seven revenues for the city. Our sales tax, our motor vehicle license fee, we have overhead from other operating funds, from the water sewer and the capital funds, property taxes, refuse services, franchise fee, and business license fees.
I just wanted to make a general comment that the sales tax budget that we use is based on our consultant, who determines what last year was, and they anticipate what next year's gonna be, correct? So we're not in the, but, we're not really forecasting the economy per se, but will we see the trend?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And we were conservative even then.
It's conservative.
We didn't claim the full amount that they were projecting.
Not to the extent.
I'd be pretty surprised you didn't mean here.
So, as you can see, there's a actual negative, and again, you'll only see the one-time increase here in the property, in the sales tax. It was a little bit higher than anticipated, and, but, as you can see, it's pretty flat or negative in the rest of the top seven revenue sources.
What would you characterize as the reason for a drop of 12 percent in property taxes?
Part of the, the one-time was because of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. We, we received some residual property taxes that they transferred. As a taxing entity, the city gets those revenues, so we, we received some of those.
And also, the county did miscalculate the property tax for the past three years, so that was part of it, too.
And these are our general fund expenditures. As you can see, we're, pretty much, our change is a 0.5 percent increase overall for the year, from one operating year to the next. And again, there's, there's structured cost into some of the contracts that we have for software increases, there's personnel costs, there's public safety cost increases, and then you'll see that for fire department, there's actually a decrease due to the joint contract with the city of Colton.
It's worth noting that for our city, between police services and fire department, it looks like it makes up about 61 percent of the budget, and some of the cities are having significant financial issues, makes up 75 percent or higher.
And this is a summary of our anticipated ending, the fiscal year, for our fund balance. Again, we are starting with 9.8 in total fund balance, including our reserves. We're anticipating basically a 13.5 and a 13.5 in revenues and expenditures, and basically only adding a $45,000 increase to our general fund for next year. Overall, this is the city, which includes our water fund, sewer fund, our capital projects funds, and special revenue funds. So you'll see from, um, these are a little bit more different. They, they don't have to have necessarily a balanced budget. We do dip into some reserves, especially for the capital projects fund, and maybe for the water and sewer, if there are capital projects that need to be addressed, and we'll dip into reserves or, or fund balance to, to accomplish those projects. Again, so you'll see here, our revenues for some of those major funds, sewer, water, our connected communities, our capital projects, and other funds. The major one here will be the capital projects fund. We have the Stewart Street project going on right now, which will go into next year as well, and we are receiving contributions from the Loma Linda University to fund that project.
Also, the campus street widening on Barton Road to the new street of Colmore Highway.
When is that supposed to begin?
Uh, probably, you know, next year, wait until, you know, it's completed, the parking structure, and the close off, and, and close off the prospect.
Okay, and, and the parking structure scheduled to be completed end of the calendar year, is that right?
I think, I think I agree with all that.
I think, I think it's gonna be done by start of school year.
Yes.
They're making good headway.
Yes.
Then why would we wait so long to start?
Because right now, right now, we need, we need that, that front is road as a secondary asset from that, from that parking structure.
Okay.
So assuming they completed that parking structure, they can open up the Morne Highway, and then we can call aside all that, that front is road.
Okay.
And then widen campus for bars into the Morne Highway.
And here, we see the overall city expenditures for those funds as well. As you can tell, we are minimizing the increases, trying to hold expenditures down, and, and keep the city fully operational, and hopefully, provide the service to the citizens that they are accustomed to, while not increasing our cost. And here, you'll see the change in the total city fund balance. It's a negative $685,000, but again, you'll see the, the major part of that will be the Stewart Street project, and we will, the city's contribution to that project will be measure I funding for that project. And now, we have the Housing Authority, which basically is operating on revenues from repayment of loans that are outstanding, and some rental income that it receives, and any interest earnings, and basically, there are minimal operations at the current time. We are trying to reduce any, any operational ti, at this time, because we do not have a funding source, a, a strong funding source for housing at this time. And again, we are very conservative and very conscientious of our revenues and expenditures, and we anticipate an increase to our fund balance and, throughout the year, and we, we wanna thank everybody that participated in this budget process, from the council members to the Budget Committee, and all department staff that contribute and help us to accomplish and get this done in a timely manner.
Questions appropriate?
Any questions?
I, I did have one. We, I had all my, I thought I had all my questions answered last week in the workshop, which was very comprehensive. But to come back to your first slide, the 3.5 million in the rainy day fund, how is that calculated? Where, how did we come up with 3.5? Is it a percentage of our, of our general fund, or is it based on our utilization of a rainy day fund in previous years? How do we come up with that?
Basically, it was slowly started by putting aside a million dollars in one year, and then building up. The goal was to be hopefully at 26 percent or, or higher. The Budget Committee was very strong in pushing for that, and pushing forward, and as, as funding allowed in the general fund and fund balance, additional funds were added to that till we reached the 3.5 million in that fund.
So we're happy with where we're at currently?
Current.
Based on the size of our general fund?
Correct.
And have we had to dip into our rainy day fund in the past, such as when we had the floods here a couple of years ago?
Um, we did not. We still have a good available fund balance that is not part of that emergency, so we use that available fund balance as part of, to assist with the emergency response. So we did not have to dip into-
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Have to pass through Mary Cook first to spend that money.
Actually, to dip into the emergency contingency fund, we would have to come to council for an action, because we did, GAZB required us to adopt what's called a fund balance resolution and policy, and we officially committed that money. So at the authority level, that it was committed, it has to be approved to be expended, to be spent, and that's at the council level.
So why call it a rainy day fund instead of an emergency fund? It has different implications?
Before we adopted the resolution, it was called the rainy day fund, but it is a committed fund now. In emerg, in, in the financial statements, it is actually an emergency contingency fund.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I feel better.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of an artificial small wall to keep politicians' grimy fingers out of the reserves, so. It's worked so far.
I was just gonna make a general statement, that it's great that we continue to function in a healthy manner, and it's nice to see that the economy's slowly picking up, because we see sales tax going up. But just a word of caution, that given our situation with the state, and if we're not successful in that, our whole fund balance will disappear overnight, because the state is running out of money, and they're robbing us. So, just wanna let everybody know that we work really, really hard, and it all can go down really fast.
Well, on that positive note, well, no, I, I actually wanna reflect the first part of what Councilman Popezku was saying. The, the report that we heard in the workshop was, was very, very comprehensive, and, and I've heard a few of these reports now, and I appreciate how thorough they are, and how accurate they are, in terms of projecting what our actual costs and revenues are going to be, and it makes me feel, and I think it should make all the citizens of Loma Linda feel like our budget's in good hands and being managed very carefully and effectively.
We have a good leader.
We have a good finance officer, too.
And the staff.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
She's controlled the money, I have to beg her for money to use. We have, we have, I'm sorry, we have a member from the Budget Committee. Mary, would you like to say anything?
No.
Okay, so we have items J and K, the council bill and the Housing Authority bill. I would say they're all under number 16.
Based, based on our previous knowledge in workshop of the budget and understanding of it, I'm gonna go ahead and move Council Bill R. 2012-15, and Loma Linda Housing Authority Bill R. 2013-01, adopting the 2013-2014 fiscal budget for both entities. Bill R. 2013-01, adopting the 2013-2014 fiscal budget for both entities. And I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition? Okay, that's adopted. Thank you very much, everyone involved.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I believe we still have Council Bill R. 2013-13, which is approving the terms of them.
So we'll need 13 and 14.
Correct.
Well, if it's possible, I'll amend my motion to include R-2013-13, which is basically our negotiation with, with our city staff. And that would include all the recommended staff actions.
Yeah. We'll make this a new motion. We already passed the other. And, and the adjusted appropriations limit as well?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. So the motions for both of those, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any other discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. Item number 17, awarding contract for auditing services, Finance Department.
Mayor, council members, we are here to recommend that we award our audit service contract to Rogers, Anderson, Melody, and Scott. We, a little background here, we, we went out to a formal bid on, we sent out proposals on April 22nd. We received seven proposals back. We decided to interview the three lowest responsible and qualified bidders. The audit, a member of the audit committee, the city manager, and finance management staff interviewed the three firms. And we selected Rogers, Anderson, Melody, and Scott. We felt their thoroughness of approach for conducting the audit was, was what we were looking for. We felt their qualifications and related experience as an audit team was satisfactory and what we needed. And we, we were very impressed with the resources available to perform the audit. In recent years, we have suffered a reduction in staff in finance, and we've had to contribute more to the audits in the recent years. So we were looking for a firm that could come in and offer more staff on their side that could actually do more of the work onsite and be able to just take the audit back and complete it. And so that's what we were looking for. And we were able, with the assistance of the city manager, to negotiate a, a lower price than originally bid. So we were able to then recommend that we go with this firm at this time.
Have we worked with them before?
No, we have not.
How often do we typically change auditing firms?
Generally, it has been, well, DFOA recommends every five years that you, you switch audit firms at a minimum, and, and with the potential to extend it for a couple more years. We were with the last audit firm for about seven years. They did go through a couple of acquisitions in the meantime, so it was, it was getting new staff or new management to do our audit. So, so we felt like it was a switch in, in a company, in a firm, so, so we stayed with them at the time. And they were somewhat familiar with us. And then with the whole dissolution of the RDA, it would, it would have been a big impact on my staff, so we decided to stay with them at the time. But we feel at this time it is, it is wise to go out and get new auditors.
And the recommendation was unanimous across the committee of three?
We felt it was.
Okay.
I should note that we interviewed three different firms. And besides the fact that they felt, we felt that they had enough resources to address some of the concerns that the staff had. And it's interesting that now that I've sat on the IVDA and the San Bernardino boards, we've learned sometimes auditing firms will tell you that they're going to do a number of things, and in the end, they may not always do it, and you find the staff will end up doing a lot of it. So that's always a concern. And how capable are they of completing their job without having staff to additional work, which is important? This particular firm actually was the auditor for the airport and the, for, and the IVDA for a number of years, and they did a wonderful, wonderful job. So they did a good job for us then.
Okay, so we're looking to award the contract?
I'll, so move it.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Item 18, designation of voting delegates and alternates for the League of Cities. Sounds like that would be... You willing to continue?
Yeah, I'll, I'll continue. And this would be the fourth year that I would do this. And I do sit on the board for our local League of Cities and also the presidential appointee to the Public Safety Policy Committee and a subset, which is the AB 109 Committee. So I, I will probably be there anyway for those type of meetings, and so we can probably save a few bucks if I just be the voting member, if that's what you want to do.
And our alternate is usually Jarv? Okay. So anybody else want it?
I'll move the item.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Reports of councilmen. None. Reports of officers?
I'd like to request a report from update on Stewart Street and on freeway.
Yes, sir. The Stewart Street is going great. They already poured the footing for the retaining wall along the west side of Anderson, the northwest corner of Anderson. And starting later on this week, they will pour the concrete for the footing for the retaining wall along the north side of the, the street, just east of campus, and also pour the concrete for the abutment for the bridge. So, so after that, they will start, as a matter of fact, they already started setting the form work for the deck itself. Okay? Because what we're going to do is we're going to pour the abutment, start setting the form at grade. Okay? And, and then set the form at grade, and then for the deck, and then we'll pour all of them at one time. So by, by the time the decks cure, we can remove the form and start excavating the dirt out. So.
We're still on schedule?
Yes, sir. It's doing good. Yes. We have a little challenge with the existing utility and relocate existing utility, but we, we work around it. The, the.
Tippy canoe?
Tippy canoe. If you notice, the, they already poured the retaining wall along the, the north side of the off-ramp, east of the off-ramp, so to widen the, the off-ramp. They completed the reinforced concrete box covered over the open trapezoid channel. So now the work is to, to do all the flat work now on, on the off-ramp.
And again, what's our projected completion on, on the off-ramp?
On the off-ramp, I think is, I can't remember the schedule, but they want to start the second phase where soon we have a, I will be on the interview panel for the construction management, managed team on June the 18th to select the CM firm for Phase Two. So the goal is to wrap up Phase One and start Phase Two, which is, which is the north side. The north side, yes, the north side of the, of the freeway.
Thank you.
So it's looking where we're at.
Okay. Then we have item 19, report from Lieutenant Mendoza, Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the 2012 year in review. Normally, this is done in February. The statistics are gathered in a calendar year, not a fiscal year. It's been a busy year so far, and that's why we're late. So these are the statistics gathered through our Intelligence Division. It gives you a, an idea of our crime rate. As you can see, we have 2011 in a 2012 comparison. We had some reductions in some crimes, but increases in other. Most of the increases were in thefts, burglaries, larcenies, and of course, vehicle theft, which continues to be a thorn in our side. Even this year, we continue to see an increase in vehicle thefts. Mostly Honda vehicles, because they're so easy to steal, and most of the time, they end up to the north of us in San Bernardino. So it's easy to conclude that that's who's coming over and taking the cars.
So is the focus primarily on the vehicle, or is there a location in the city where they tend to target more? Or both?
Most of the thefts occur on the university property in the.
So these are typically student and faculty vehicles?
Need a ride home from the hospital. But SPX is not in yet, so there's.
Yes.
Got to get home somehow.
So as you can see, the grand total of our statistics showed a 4% increase in crime. Some of the reasons we see as far as the spike in burglaries is that there are more people out of jail. Typically, the jails aren't holding anyone that has not committed a violent crime. So most thefts are generally released within 24 hours. So they're back out committing crime. We cannot, it's too early to connect these to the AB 109. The numbers aren't back on that yet, but we know that there are more people out of jail. The purchase of gold, a lot of these burglaries, that's what they're taking is jewelry, because gold, the price of gold went up, take it to these places that buy gold. As opposed to a pawn shop that requires identification and a thumbprint, these people that buy gold don't do that. So you can generally just take jewelry. They'll give you whatever they, they feel is fair, and they melt it down, and there it goes. iPod cell phones and computers are easy to sell on the street. Everybody wants one.
You might as well just put Apple up there, because that's the only computers that have great resale value.
As you can see, we had an increase in reports taken by deputies, and that's, you know, attributed to the, the increase in crime. Deputies are taking more reports. We also had an increase in arrests, which means our guys are being proactive out there and catching, at least caught more this year than they did the year before. So we do see an increase in, in our productivity. Calls for service went up, probably about 1,000, an increase in about 1,000 calls for service. Those are either generated by an actual reporting party or a call generated by one of our deputies, proactive activity, a detective follow-up, that type of thing. That doesn't include any calls that are canceled. A lot of times, we get emergency calls to respond to a house for medical aid. When we find out it's a, a medical call, we'll cancel. So those aren't included. Only calls we actually respond to are included there. There may be calls in there that are not included. A lot of times, our detectives will do a follow-up and not necessarily create a call. So.
What about for burglar alarms that go off? False alarms? Are those counted?
When it is canceled prior to our arrival, it is not counted. If we arrive on the scene and check the house and, and make sure it's secure, then it does count as a call for service. Those are the numbers you saw earlier as far as our increase. It goes all the way back to 2010, comparison to 2011, and the comparison to 2012. Some went up, some went down. At the end of the day, it shows an increase from 2010 all the way to 2012. Those are your deputy hours. We had a decrease in hours in 2012 because of the reduction in, in a detective. Those are the response times. As you can see, our response times have increased. That could be attributed to more traffic in the city. It's just one of those things. Generally, on our calls, we have a decrease. We don't stay on the call as long. We try to get in there and do our, our business as soon as we can and move on to the next call.
It should be noted that 10 minutes is actually pretty good for just a general call for the police, not necessarily emergency. I just noticed that, I was impressed that it's under 10 minutes, which is pretty good. I know, I talked to relatives who live in other cities or even San Bernardino, and they've, they wait up to three to four hours for a response.
I think, yes, I think San Bernardino is waiting days now for report calls.
Yeah. And yet they spend more money on police somehow.
These are our volunteer groups. Our Sheriff's Department relies a lot on our volunteers. They donate a lot of hours. At our central station, we have nine reserve deputies, which are sworn officers who do this for free. We have 50 members of Citizen on Patrol, 20 members of Search and Rescue, and our Explorer These are the activities that our reserves participate in, in the city of Loma Linda. They go out on patrol. We have two of our reserves who are gang certified, so they go out and conduct proactive patrol. They also participate in our sex offender compliance checks, our parole sweeps, our probation sweeps, our DUI saturation patrols. And they also do the, the trails, make sure there aren't any motorcycles in our trails up here in the hills. And that's the total of hours they donated for 2012, 4,000. Our Citizen on Patrol, they help out with our DUI checkpoints. They also drive around and are, are our eyes and ears when, when we're not there. Generally, they, they're out in the daytime. Very few of them come out at night. It's a little more difficult for them to be out there at night because they're not armed. They are just volunteers. As you can see, they donated over 3,000 hours to the city of Loma Linda. It's about nine hours a day, seven days a week, the year of 2012.
Can you tell me if any of the Citizen patrols are Loma Linda citizens?
Yes. Yes, there are. There was a time when we had three separate posts of Citizen on Patrol, but due to our reduction in staff, we couldn't manage all three, so we combined them. Because in reality, they are, they are volunteers for the Sheriff's Department, not for a particular city, but they are residents of Loma Linda who participate in the program.
So if, if, if we had more citizens who volunteered to get trained and be on Citizen Patrol, do you have the capacity to handle additional volunteers?
Absolutely.
So that we could keep more people floating through our city to keep track of what was going on?
Yes.
Because we do have a rising crime rate.
I think Dr. Daley was asking for an application.
All right. Can you just raise your right hand?
He has a lot of free time.
And our Search and Rescue organization, those are also volunteers. They participate in the Loma Linda Parade and the Kids Watch Program. Kids Watch Program is run by Sylvia Beasley, and it's generally at the elementary school. It teaches kids about stranger danger, internet safety, and that type of stuff. They have a, a small graduation and get cake at the end of the program. They donate 11,000 hours. Of course, all those hours weren't here at Loma Linda, but those guys work a lot. Our Explorers, right along with our deputies on patrol, they also do a lot of our office work. They do filing, and they participate on DUI checkpoints. They help out with filling out paperwork and that type of thing. And that's the end.
In case there are citizens that do want to get on a patrol, do they just contact the Sheriff's Office then and volunteer? Or what's the process?
They contact Sylvia Beasley, and she will provide them with an application. They'll go through an interview.
She's at the central station?
Yes. She, you can probably find her here at least three times a week.
Yeah, we have a police substation here, here in the, in the city, too, that they, they come by.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not, not all day long, but they, they will stop by.
Right.
And a Loma Linda citizen would ordinarily be assigned to be patrolling in the city of Loma Linda?
They have the option to patrol wherever they want. So if they prefer to stay in Loma Linda, they have that option.
Okay.
We didn't want to limit any of our volunteer. We didn't wanna limit any of our volunteers to just one area. We wanted them to go ahead and drive around, see the county area, see how things kinda operate different in the county as far as services. But if that's their choice, yes, they can remain here in the city.
And then they're in Citizen Patrol cars that are labeled, I suppose?
Yes, they are. They are--
I just haven't seen them.
They have the Sheriff's logo, the progressive star, and it's clearly marked Citizen on Patrol. They have amber lights on top and a radio, so they can call out anything suspicious.
And they're sometimes equipped with license plate recognition--
That's correct.
--equipment, so they're driving around and it'll ping and they'll get all excited because there's a stolen car.
Oh, really?
Yeah, one of my patients is one of the COPs and he gives me an update every time he comes in for his checkups.
Sounds like you want an application.
Yeah. I think Riggsby and I will probably take over one of those cars one of these days and yeah.
No sidearm, no deal.
You can be a reserve. Thank you.
Could I ask one other thing?
Yes.
It would be, I'd like to go through this a little more in more detail before you the presentation. In future years, would it be possible to get this a few days before?
Sure.
I'd appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
I should note that I think the Sheriff's Department did provide us with a master report just before the budget year of all the cities.
That's correct.
It's put together in a glossy form, not--
Correct, correct. But just in general, they did have some preliminary information for us about a few months ago.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
That brings the City Council to an adjournment, but we have two more agencies to dispense with. First is already opened, the Housing Authority Agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, there is a request for someone to speak on an unrelated item. El Cie es Puerto?
Yes.
Would you come forward? This is your opportunity. You have three minutes.
I had come here a bit over a year ago in relation to a matter regarding my car that the sheriff stole under color of law and authority. And I have addressed the matter to Mr. Taipei here then by email and to you in a meeting. And you turned it down to an officer and the officer turned it to a risk management employee of the sheriff. And I feel that the decision of that employee of the sheriff is not the decision of a judge and is inconsistent with the law. And I have written to you recently regarding these matters in an email. You haven't responded and I need to know where exactly I can serve you a subpoena to take a deposition from you.
The "you" you're referring to is?
You, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you want a deposition regarding something I know nothing about, but I guess you could do it at any time.
I need to serve you the document and I need to know where I can serve you without hindrance because I have tried to serve documents to Mr. Taipei here and his secretaries and him himself has given me the runaround before. I think I have put those issues in a complaint before. And to me, all that amount of deprivation of due process, I write that you and everybody in here guaranteed to me as a citizen and that is unfair.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if this relates to a claim, and in particular, a claim against the Sheriff's Department, it's not something that we can address this evening. As a potential litigation matter, we should not comment upon it this time. The gentleman is required to follow the normal claims procedures. In this particular case, it sounds like his remedy would be with the county rather than with the city because they administer those programs. But we could certainly receive and forward any information that he'd like to provide.
So, what I need basically is your business card and then hopefully your fax number is there. You are the attorney for the city here and I wasn't aware of that.
I'll be happy to provide that and we'll forward the information to wherever it should go.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we already discussed the closed session. We have the consent calendar.
Move it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. The old business is taken care of. Are there any chair or member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none, it's, we're adjourned. Now, we go to the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on any item not on the agenda for RDA successor? Okay, hearing none, we have the consent calendar. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Come again next time.